Okay, hour of six o'clock having arrived, we'll call the regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hahn.
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Those present in the public.
Yes, seven members of the village board present and answering the roll. Corum being established, we're gonna proceed with the order of business as set forth on the agenda. For the record, Trustee Long is attending via telephone on speakerphone. And also for the record today is Tuesday, February 16th of 2021. We're at the Sherman Village Hall located at 401 St. John's Drive in Sherman, Illinois. The time is 6:00 PM, it's a regular meeting. Moving us along in the opening takes us to the Pledge of Allegiance. If I could ask everybody to stand, place your flag. Let's have Chief Baker lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance on your computer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Today with the set of the agenda, they took us to post at 38 hours in advance of the meeting in court for the open meetings act. There'll be no action items added to the agenda this evening unless there's an emergency purpose, but apparently there is so. That being said, we're very pleased, seeking recognition for discussion purposes only. Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to set the agenda as a motion to that effect. Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Tim. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the agenda is set. We're gonna move to the clerk's report. Item number one is the presentation of the January 19, 2021 regular board meeting minutes. They're presented for approval by the village clerk. Are there any trustees that have any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the January 19, 2021 regular board meeting minutes. There are motion to that effect. Trustee Rockford makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Hahn. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no, the bill comes through. The minutes are approved, it'll be added to the website. And brings us to item number two, the presentation of bills for approval. Bills are also presented in your board member packets. Any trustees have any questions regarding the bills? Trustees, okay, so we need a motion to pay the bills, there's our motion to that effect. Trustee Schultz makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Gray. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no, bills are approved for payment. There is no treasurer's report this evening, which brings us to the village engineer's report. He's got the evening off tonight. Bringing us to legal, legal is also on the phone, conference stand, attorney. No report, counselor?
No.
Okay, brings us to village administrator, economic development coordinator, nothing. All right, moving along expeditiously, brings us to the president's report. Item number one is ordinance approving procurement and financing of a police pursuit vehicle for the police department. Administrator Stratton, do you need to point out anything regarding this? Trustees, any questions? Chief, anything? Quick one-on-one, 30 seconds.
Yeah, we obviously did it for the time, usually we try and do that kind of out of the chute at the beginning of the year, but that's when we start losing some manpower. And there was an urgent need to do that, so we push it back to later on in the year. And that's just where we're at now. We'd be releasing a 10-year-old squad car with well over 10,000 miles on it.
This was 10-year budget?
Yes.
In the budget, everybody in the budget who invited for this. So there were multiple banks that bid on the financing for this vehicle. One, two, three, four, five of them. The lowest bidder was I and B at .8%. Which is astonishing to other people.
Yeah.
Was very happy with that rate. So I don't think there's any question on who we move forward with. That being said, does anybody have any questions regarding the police department and Chief Baker?
Which car were you retiring?
Twenty-ten Ford Expeditional Rover, please.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the financing with I and B. Based on their lowest bid of .8%. There's an ordinance on the table. An ordinance permitting procurement and finance of police pursuit vehicle for the police department. Motion is made by Trustee Tim, the public safety trustee, seconded by Trustee Rockford. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no. The police department is afraid to move forward on the police pursuit. Item number two in the president's report, there's an ordinance approving procurement and finance of two Public Works vehicles for public works operations. Those vehicles are... We received bids, we requested bids from one, two, three, four, five, six different entities. West Town Ford, Jim Exam's Ford, Victory Lane Ford, Bob Writing's Ford, Landmark Ford, Morrow Brothers Ford. This is for an F-350 truck. It'll be used as a service truck, this replaces a public works director's vehicle. And then that vehicle, I believe, is gonna be moved to Mr. Beal.
Yeah, somewhere.
And it's capable of having a small snowplow, or no? I don't know, maybe not, okay. But then there's an F-550 as well that will definitely have a snowplow.
Are you asking whether or not the new vehicle will have a snowplow attached to it?
Yes.
Yes, it will.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the previous one that we got.
Oh, yeah, no, the 350 will have.
Correct, yes, sir.
So two more snowplow-capable vehicles, an F-350 and an F-550. The F-350 Director Newton will use as his service truck essentially, much like he does his driver. Mr. Beal will, I think, likely take that and get out of that very old, shippy and hollow, whatever you're driving.
She's a beaut.
Trustee Long says she looks really good in it. But the intent would be to try and get you a new vehicle in the very near future too. Cause you do a lot of service work as well and run the sewer department. Okay, that being said, the bids received and according to this specs as follows, I'm just gonna move down for the financing, the lowest bidder again was I and B at .8%. Five banks, one, two, three, four, five, bid on that. The lowest bidder was Victory Lane Ford, delivery date of April, or between April and the May of 2021. Any questions, discussion regarding this?
I have a question that, I know GM doesn't make a heavy pickup truck, and Ford clearies do. Did we ever look at like a, does Dodge Ram make those big trucks?
We looked into the Rams and that, with the weight, they don't make one heavy enough to haul comparable to a 550. So that's where we ran into a problem there, getting gear ratios and that that we needed.
Okay, I knew GM didn't make one.
Correct.
When the 550 is a big pickup truck.
Yeah, they also, like I said, a lot of them weren't on state contract.
Okay.
So, but, yeah, we did look at them.
Also keep the vehicles about the same for servicing, mechanical, and maintenance on the vehicle.
Yeah, we can save the bed off any of our trucks and put them on, you know, a new one. If we ever go to get rid of them, we wouldn't have purchased the bed, they're all the same.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, so the ordinance that sits on the table is before you now. I'm gonna read that into the record real quick, it's the sales order. On here, there's an ordinance approving the procurement and finance of two public works vehicles for public works operations. Is there a motion to approve said ordinance? Trustee Schultz? I'm gonna do this, if you're okay with that. Trustee Long, the public works. Okay, so the public works trustee, Trustee Long, make a motion to approve said ordinance, seconded by Trustee Schultz. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no. The major having received the constitutional majority, that is, it's passed. Bringing us to item number three. This is, I should've actually done this at the beginning of the meeting, but I should've introduced this other attorney who's sitting on my left-hand side right here. But I think you all probably remember Mike Southworth.
Oh, yeah.
He's bond counsel for the village of Sherman and a whole bunch of other cities, towns, and municipalities. Nobody knows bonding like Mike does, so...
That could be your slogan. Nobody knew.
So we actually engaged his service... What's that, counselor, other counselor?
Be careful, don't raise your rights.
Well, when that happens, we just reduce yours.
Just one beer.
Okay, so moving along, I'm gonna get into item number three, which is on the agenda. An ordinance, a special ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, actually messed up. So we're gonna skip that one for right now, we're gonna go to item number four. An ordinance, the adoption of an ordinance providing for and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2021, of the village of Sherman, Sangamon County, Illinois. The purpose of this issuance of Series 2021 bonds is to refund the 2016 bond issue and to provide a balance for the purpose of financing construction of street improvements and other municipal projects within the village. So before I turn it over to bond counsel and for questions regarding this bond issuance, sum this up really fast. I don't know, what was it, a month ago, we engaged bond counsel to help us move through this process. We're trying to adhere to basically our five-year capital plan. We're at five years since the last bond issuance. We know that there are some stressed roads and other infrastructure items that need to be tended to, to where there isn't, we don't wanna draw down the balances in all of our funds, for one thing, leaving us in a different situation. And we know, and we've always had this plan, to move forward with another bond issuance financing mechanism to help with the improvement of various different streets around the village and some other items. So we're sticking with our plan, we're still on schedule. The reason why this is happening today, tonight, I'll let bond counsel speak to that. He had given us a calendar of targeted dates that he had to hit regarding this bond issuance, if we wanted it to be included on the levy for the 2020 year, receivable in 2021. So final action on all of this, my understanding would have to be by March 1st, right?
That is correct.
And so this keeps us on par and on schedule with that calendar of sequence of events that we need to, benchmarks we need to hit. That being said, we had contacted one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different banks, asked for a couple of different scenarios, while I turn it over to the professional.
No, no, you're taking five, forever you are, but whatever you wish.
So anyway, Mr. Southworth had kinda given myself and the district of Stratton a couple of different scenarios, A and B essentially. Asked the banks for essentially a fixed rate type plan, see what they'll do with those rates. And Plan B, also give them the autonomy to come up with some different ideas as to how they could potentially bid this and offer it to the village, and then choose from that. So we actually chose to get greater, a greater amount of options to seek, you know, to see what the abilities were, was out there, and so we did that. And I think, does everybody have the sheet turned out?
No, we haven't.
Okay, but that being said, we had responses from, what, five banks?
Yes.
So we had responses from five banks, and I'll let you, I'm gonna let you take it over essentially right now in terms of the responses from the banks and how the process works from here, from here on out.
As Trevor said, the solicitation for proposals went out to nine banks, five responded. The directions that I was given were to ask for a few different alternatives, both the shorter maturity and the longer maturity, 10, 15, and 20 years, to see how their, how the banks would propose their rates. Basically, we were asking them to submit proposals based on interest rate, but then also on structure if they had some ideas. And so as you might expect, the 10-year rates were less than the 15 and the 20-year rates. And there were fixed rates that were submitted, so, which is a little bit unusual for banks, because banks like to have some sort of adjustment mechanism. They don't like to, traditionally don't like to go up a long way in maturity. And in their minds, five or 10 years starts getting long. So we were fortunate to receive proposals that included 15- and 20-year fixed rates. But we also received a variable rate from Illinois National Bank. The lowest rates came from the United Community Bank. And after assembling it and presenting it, I think the consensus was that the village would like to go with a 15-year fixed rate. Since rates are so low, to try to capture this moment in time to get a low fixed rate. And United Community Bank came in at 2.11%. And so I prepared an ordinance for your approval tonight that would approve the sale of the bonds, 15-year bonds maturing in 2036, that bear interest at 2.11%. It's roughly a level debt service that's approximately $275,000 per year. It's a, it is payable for property tax. So the ordinance will go on file with the county clerk, and the county clerk will annually extend the property tax to collect, and that amount. And because we are doing it before March 1st, the first levy collection will occur this summer.
Can you briefly touch on the, how, what we're doing with refunding the 2016?
Yes, yes, I think, I'm sorry, I shouldn't, yeah, absolutely, yeah. So when initially this was looked at, the thought was, in 2016, the village did issue a million five of bonds, and those are variable rates. They are still outstanding. There's about a million two or so of that remaining. And they are at a higher rate than what the rates are today. And so when initially, we started looking at the issuance of new bonds for new projects, I asked, would you like to consider refunding the old and save some money? And the answer was yes. So those, those bonds, I think, were at 2.44%, but were variable rates and would be subject to adjustment over the next, you know, 10, 15 years.
Yes, sir, what was the late of that previous one?
I think that was 15 years as well, yes. And so there were four years under our belts, and another 11 to go, with an adjustment coming in about a year or two.
And so by refunding it, what do we say?
Yeah, we're sitting, on a present value basis, about $17,000. In absolute dollars, it would be more than that. But it's clearly, you know, a good savings and helps, you know, helps the cause.
Okay, so one thing, others, is Trustee Schultz, did you have a question?
I gotta comment on what I, just to make sure everybody understands something.
Yeah, yeah. One thing I wanted to point out in all of this, I know we're all moving forward together and doing this together, but just for the record and to say, I mean, we're doing this also because of our commitment to the Sherman Williamsville Bike Trail. Because of the bids and how that all played out, how much it came in over the estimated cost, and how long that project has been hung up through bureaucratic red tape and various different other scenarios. But Mayor Yocely and myself, when they had that bid opening, that RFP and IDOT was asking us what we're gonna do, and then, you know, we brought it back to our boards, and everybody decided, no, don't wanna rebid it, because based on the engineer's recommendations, both ours and Williamsville's, we were taking a very, very big risk and chance at rebidding it and getting an even higher bid amount. So rebidding it, nobody collectively thought that that would come in lower than what it was, it would only be higher. So we accepted the bid, that project, that work is moving forward. All of the bonds been building that, we had the groundbreaking ceremony. Soon we'll be having the ribbon cutting ceremony, which will be great. But we all made a basically verbal commitment that, no, I'm on board for ponying up the additional dollars and not drawing down the general fund, we would put that in the bond issuance for the infrastructure. You know how much we, how many, how many square miles or miles of road we got for the last bond issuance? Roads and infrastructure is very, very expensive to install, right? So you take 500,000 essentially right away for the bike trail, and then the remaining fund will be for the other projects, and we're gonna work through that, we're gonna work through which specific roads those are. But we know, just like we knew when we were going into the last one, that old tip-to-school road was our number one priority, needed to be done. Very bad situation for that road, so we got that taken care of. One road that I can tell you has been, and has to be on the top of our priority list, and if you haven't had a chance to travel it, it's Bush Lake Drive, especially down by where, if anybody knows where Joe and Dean lives, and that cul-de-sac. There are some serious infrastructure issues that are taking place right there. There's some natural springs, there's drainage issues, and there are some storm sewer inlets that actually probably should've been put in, down by those houses in that half where that island cul-de-sac is. That water has no escape route. And they are constantly having to deal with a lot of water issues, freezing issues, leave, just everything, and it's mucky, it's nasty, it looks unsightly, and we get a lot of correspondence, or not correspondence, but we're not, I mean, they talk to me, they talk to us, they complain. When we had looked at putting storm sewer inlets in there, knowing the roads were bad, I think it was 60,000 to 80,000 dollars. So we've held off, they've been very patient and waiting for us to not like do that 60,000, 80,000 dollar project a couple of years ago and roll it into this. So hopefully the costs will go down because they're tearing the road up and doing all this stuff all at once, instead of doing all this and then repatching the road. It all works together, so when we do go forward, moving forward on this, I think that everybody needs to like literally go visit that area and have a seat and know that, you know, it's top on the priority list.
I walk it, cause there's always just like slime and it's just always gonna suck right there. And actually, when I walk by, I kinda like kick the little grate, just so the water can go down if it gets there.
Right, so that'll be one. Trustee Long?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything you're saying about that, I took a man over there this time of year, especially, and the water's freezing, it's just, just an icy mess over there. I know it's hard for other works to do anything over there, so that is definitely on my list to get done, so.
Okay, very good, thank you for adding that. And public works coordinator, Beal, is shaking his head in agreement as well, so. But we'll continue to move forward, there's some other projects, there's some other things that we've identified that's gonna delink this, but this'll allow and bond counsel of Southworth to look at that and come up with the eligible list, and we'll look with the engineering firm to identify these roads.
And that George Town Road was the other one.
Yep, yep.
We may have found a different source of money for that, just so you know, what it is on the list.
Okay. Yep.
Which believes us to do more works for else, else.
Is there anything else that you'd like to point out that could be covered?
Uh, no, I guess maybe just one other comment is that the bonds are prepayable at any time, so for any reason you want to pay off the bonds, or if you come into money, you are another source of revenue, you may and would do it without that.
Very good.
Part of the Mike Southworth Foundation.
Yes.
Any additional discussion? Do you wanna, are you making a comment before the vote, after the vote, right now?
Well, I'm gonna say now, I'm gonna go for this.
Yeah, yeah.
Two things, one, one of the, one of the bids was a variable rate loan, I think Mr. Southworth did indicate that. And I had some discussions with Mr. Stratton that, this is my personal opinion, that a municipality should not be taking interest rate risk when they have good other options. And the example is, I thought Mr. Stratton had. The formula that they had was tied to the five-year treasury rate. Well, the five-year treasury rate dropped significantly last February, March due to COVID. If you put back what the five-year treasury was last January, less than a year, well, a year ago, that formula would have a rate that was, that looked like to be slightly higher than the fixed rate loan would be, without any of the interest rate risk. And I, hopefully, I think we all agree that COVID's gonna hopefully go away. Things might get back to somewhat normal, and interest rates go back to where they were a year ago, which was historically very low. So taking a floating rate loan when you have a historically low rate did not make sense to me at all. The second thing is, is that I think the statement was, if interest rate was 2.11, Southworth? Yes. That's effectively a weighted average. That is correct. So if anybody actually looked at the bond issue, year one, interest was 1.08.
Correct.
Year 15 is 2.6, but the weighted average, what we're paying is 2.1. So 2.1 is, that's our average cost here, which is how to look at it, but just in case somebody actually reviews all these.
No, I'm glad that you laid that all out.
Yeah, jump out at you.
Absolutely, perfect. Any additional questions or discussion? Do you have the ordinance? It's, that is, the exact, that's what's written on that, is that right?
Not that one, it's on the one, two, three, four.
So I'm gonna read this into the record, cause this is what we are passing. Okay, so the ordinance that sits on the table, this ordinance number 2021-02, and this is an ordinance providing for and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2021 of the village of Sherman, Sangamon County, Illinois, for the purposes of financing costs of refunding the village's general obligation bonds, Series 2016, and costs of construction of street improvements and other municipal projects within the village. So the chair would entertain a motion to approve said ordinance as read into the record. Is there a motion to that effect? Who wants to improve our roads? With their name on it. Who wants to make the motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, trustee? Trustee, all right, how about this, trustee Hahn makes a motion, and it's gonna be seconded by trustee Gray or Long?
Oh.
Or Long? My, okay, trustee Long is gonna second that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the Hahn Long ordinance, Act, it's called the Hahn Long Act, for improving Sherman, is scheduled. Act, let's call it the Hawn Long Act, for improving Sherman is scheduled for a vote this evening, right? Okay, so anyway, motion's been made by trustee Hawn, seconded by trustee Long. Any additional discussion seen? None, clerk, please call the rule.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hawn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Okay, so the major having received a majority vote allows the village president to also vote on the prevailing side. I would like to be recorded as voting yes for helping to approve the Village of Sherman. That being said, there are seven members unanimously voting, all members of the village board voting for this ordinance. Seven, zero. The ordinance is hereby approved, will be signed by the village president and Mr. Southwood will continue to help moving us along through the process. Thank you, everyone. Let's move to the next item, item number three, and that is a special ordinance authorizing the seating of private bonding authority. So we are asked, I think this is every year. I do not even know about this. So the Central Illinois Economic Development Authority, each municipality, I believe, is authorized to have a certain.
Yes, home rule units.
Home rule units.
A bonding cap of roughly a hundred twenty-five dollars per capita, per person.
Okay.
Well, here's, here's what it amounts, and I'll try to do it in 25 words or less. Federal law allows taxes on bonds for private purposes, private use, as opposed to governmental use, streets, jails, schools. So for private use, the government allows, federal government allows tax exempt bonds, but only to a limited principal amount. And that principal amount is based on the hundred, roughly a hundred twenty-five dollars per person in a home rule unit. If it's not used, it's lost. So, so if you don't, if the village doesn't have any private users in industrial use or some, some sort of non-governmental use, it would be lost. But there are rules permitting you to transfer it to someone who does or to aggregate with another community, other communities, and build up a larger amount for a project. And so that's what this is, the Saida is saying, if you are not going to use your bonding cap, please transfer it to us because we will have some projects to do. And, and then Illinois won't lose its bonding cap.
Couldn't say it better?
More than 25 words, I apologize.
We've done this, I think, every year or every couple of years.
That's right, it's very common.
Yes, every time it's been requested of us, we're not using it, we don't have any private users that come forward seeking this. So as Mr. Southwood said, it only makes sense to transfer authority to this entity to allow for potential economic development somewhere, as they have Illinois, bettering all of us. So any questions regarding this? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the special ordinance authorizing the seating of private bonding authority. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Rockford makes a motion, seconded by trustee Gray. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hawn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yeah.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes and none voting no, the measure is adopted and approved. Next is the appointment of a chair and members to the planning commission. I'm not so sure. Yeah, so we got a couple vacancies on the planning commission. We're gonna be having.
We have one scheduled for the 12th second, which is next Monday. But we have a quorum under our current commission, we just don't have a chair.
So we have two vacancies right now. Mr. Zabudis, Trey Zabudis, I think everybody knows Trey. He moved into Springfield, right? And so obviously vacated his seat. What I would like to do and just simply have the board weigh in and, and get support. What I'd like to do is, advice and consent essentially, is Brad Davis, who's been the vice chair of it, I pointed him in 2007, when I first got elected. So he has been the vice chair since 2007, I believe, or somewhere whereabouts. Brad knows a lot about, is very interested in kind of plan development, plan development, urban planning, various different things. He's a very smart guy, very nice, kind individual, very good to work with. I know that Mr. Hawn knows him very well and probably echoed those sentiments. I don't think he misses Brad. Ms. Rockford knows Brad. Brad's a good, just genuine to the core, good guy. So what I'd like to do is just elevate him. I feel comfortable in him taking it over, running this meeting on Monday night. If everybody is good with that, I would like to ask for advice and consent, looking in the record, that we be making Mr. Davis the chair of the planning commission. Is there consensus on that?
Yes.
So I need, I'll just do a motion really fast. Trustee Hawn makes a motion, seconded by trustee Gray. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those paws, and trustee Long just weighed in as well. Those paws, the ayes have it. We will move Mr. Davis and notify him that he is now planning commission chair. So I started to talk about the vacancies. There's two vacancies. Mr. Zabudis left and then Mr. Hurley is technically, I think his term has expired, but he's also gone on military leave.
Yeah, he's been gone for a couple of years, actually.
Yeah, he's been gone for quite a while. And the planning commission has.
Doesn't meet, hasn't.
Doesn't meet, doesn't meet that rate.
Sixteen or seventeen.
If you're comfortable with doing, I had, I literally thought that I'd already done this. And we checked the record and I don't think we found it, but does everybody know who Travis Turner is? Who's in the military as well? You know Mr. Turner? He's a major in the army. He's pretty much running, helping run the state's COVID response and various different things. I will tell you this, he's getting, he's moving to Poland, Warsaw, Poland, and I'm gonna look, work at the US Embassy there in a short period of time. I thought I had already pointed him to this. And Lou, I could probably search my email, if everybody's comfortable, I'd like to put him on there, at least for this meeting. He's a very smart, very knowledgeable guy, has high rank in the military, is committed to our town. Now, they're gonna move back here in like three years, but I literally thought he was already on the planning commission and I, I just, we don't have it. But a fellow vacancy for a short period of time, he's willing to step up, he kind of already thought he was on there. If you're comfortable with it, I'd like to appoint Travis Turner to the planning commission. I hope he can make the meeting. If he can't, you know, we'll just deal with it. We've already got it for him. But at least formalize what he and I had spoke about a while back. Do you know Mr. Turner?
Who?
Yeah. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So the, so the chair would seek advice and consent to appoint Mr. Travis Turner to the planning commission. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Tim makes a motion, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Hawn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Should I do a roll call? Should we do a roll call, Don?
Yes.
Okay, actually, I'll, I'll take a roll call. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hawn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Okay, that's six members voting yes and none voting no. Mr. Turner will be added to the planning commission. That takes care of one vacancy. We'll just, we'll leave it at that for right now. And then conclude the president's report with that, I believe. Does anybody else have anything on the president's report? Nothing? So the committee department reports, need them to report? As we've sat here, Sherman Police Department Chief Banger, nothing. Sherman Urban Safety Management Agency Director Mose.
I'm still here.
Still here. It's good to see you. Public Works Director Sean Newton, he has the evening off. He's in a much better place. Right now. But let me just say this real fast. So in, in lieu of Mr. Newton's almanus, the Public Works Department, which they always do even when Mr. Newton is here, but I want to thank the Public Works Department and Mr. Beal's here for your response to the snow removal. These guys started about five or six AM on Monday, which was yesterday, a lot late into the evening hours. And then I think you guys came back at what, two, three, whatever it was.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock in the morning. They've been plowing all day long. I don't know what time you left, but they literally, the streets look exceptional. Nothing but compliments. I can't thank you guys enough.
You've got a good group of guys and a Casey's Pizza. It keeps them here all night.
The guys are awesome, seriously. I mean, I'm not just saying.
I'll pass it on to them, they're a good group.
It's very comforting to know that, just to know that everything's getting done. I mean, I remember when I first got elected and some of us, you know, were there at that time, but there was an uneasiness about like trying to get the operation going. To me, I feel like it's such a well-willed machine now that I almost feel, it's almost, to me, a feeling of too much laissez-faire-ness because I have so much confidence in these guys to just get it done where I'm, you know, I'm like kind of feeling like I need to need more hands on. But I can't thank you guys enough and I, like I texted you that earlier, please thank all the guys. The roads look great. I drove, I was on the road yesterday, drove around, looked great. And there was a heavy snow that just kept coming, coming, coming. And while there may look like there's some snow on the ground, I mean, and then that thick or whatever, it just would continue to kind of coat the road because it's all snow packed and everything. But if you're actually driving on it, there was literally nothing on the road. And you guys working all through it today, I mean, it looks exceptional. And you can see how much snow they moved by looking at the sides of the roads and cul-de-sacs, bed boxes, all the various things that it takes to get these roads plowed that are, you know, hazards and obstacles and objects and things that are time consuming to plow around. You guys do it very, very, very well and exceptional. So thank you again for.
Thank you guys.
Communication and everything, so. New business, is there any new business coming forward? There's none, so there's no old business coming forward. We do not have any civic organization seeking comment or a presentation. There is no executive session this evening. That brings us to the call to comment period of the meeting. We have the podium, the sign sheet somewhere.
It's on the podium. I mean, on your podium.
It was here. There were two people signing. There were two people signing, one was.
Me and John, he said no.
Okay, so the floor is yours. You have three minutes to present to the board for two years.
Okay, I have a couple of things. One thing is, I wonder why the payroll is not posted to the website anymore on a regular basis like bills are. The last payroll on the website right now is from November 10th to November 23rd. I know people have been paid through December and January. And where are those, why are they not getting posted regularly like the bills are? They used to be, but they don't anymore. The other thing is, why are we not getting monthly treasurer reports? The last one was April 30th of 2020. In December, the treasurer gave a six-month report from May of 20 to October of 20, but we, we're not seeing monthly treasurer's reports anymore. So they're not getting posted to the website either. So the taxpayers are not getting the kind of transparency that they deserve. The other thing is, you mentioned that the, you're refinancing the bonds and taking on new bonds for additional work. It was mentioned that there's still 1.2 million left on the old bonds that we're refinancing and that we're refin, we're getting more money apparently at 2.11% and 275,000 per year. But nothing's been said about the amount of bonds that we're bonding out. You know, how much are we, how much extra are we getting besides refinancing the 1.2 million? What, what else are we, it's like refinancing your home, you know? You do it because you need money to do another project. So, you know, what's the total amount we're refin, we're financing this time for 15 years? Let's see. I guess that's it. Oh, and I wanted to ask if there's anything, new thing being done about the neighbor next door that's like with all the dogs?
Okay, so I'll take all that real fast. As you know, we don't, we're not supposed to make this back and forth comment period, but I'll entertain it from time to time, you know, just to raise some valid questions. So real quickly, my understanding was, was that your neighbor has ceased that operation, right?
Yeah, she is now no longer breeding dogs.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she has completed that. She no longer do it.
So why is there?
She is going to be moving from Sherman. She is going to be putting up the house for sale. She's gonna be making improvements on the house as well. She's now transporting animals and doing that out loud, is now no longer breeding. So she's looking to relocate somewhere towards Kansas or Montana, which is the focus of her new business at Sherman. So you're gonna start seeing improvements, I believe, in summer and she's looking to move.
Have you seen or heard anything recently?
Well, occasionally the dogs keep barking and I noticed that she has been gone a couple of times and there's another person there who's like babysitting that drives this truck from another state that looks like it is a dog hauling type of truck. And when that person is there babysitting, he's got, he or she, I don't know who it is, has a really cute white and black fluffy dog, like a, like you would see that herd sheeps or something, you know? That is in the backyard and he's really sweet and he or she, and whenever he, that dog is outside, he kind of whines when we're there because he wants attention. But I said to my husband, that dog's actually cute. But the other dogs, I haven't seen them out very much other than they go out and do their business.
How many dogs?
I've seen at least three or four labs still there. And like I said, every now and then they get to bark and it sounds like a kennel living next door, you know? Or like a vet's office when they house dogs, you know, something like that. But, but I haven't seen her other than, I know when she's gone, that truck is there for a while to like babysit, so.
So my, like I said, my understanding is, is you should not, well, I mean, you can have a couple of dogs, right? I mean, if they're your own pets, that's one thing. Yeah, so you can have multiple dogs if you're, but if there's a breeding operation or any other type of operation is taking place, that's where you start getting into the administrative side of things.
Right.
But it's been a couple, few weeks, several weeks back that we learned that she was gonna take, was going to be moving and taking on different, and not do, she's not doing that anymore to the extent that, I don't know if she admitted that she was, but if she did, whatever. But that problem should go away for you.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that.
The other thing is, is two and a half million on the bonds. And yes, one more thing. What was the third thing? Oh, payroll. So we, we have some staffing issues right now and that's gonna get, that's in the process of getting fixed.
Okay.
And yeah, that'll all be added there and we're looking through some issues regarding that. And that's kind of.
Oh, and then the treasurer's report, you know?
Yeah, they're all tied together. It's all tied together. And so we're making some, some changes. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into that. And our treasurer has been ascending through the hierarchy and his employment. And he's very busy and he does tax stuff for a very, very large company. He's tied up on a lot of things. So that all being said, we're bringing in some other staff to assist and help, help out and streamline the process and make it more efficient so that we can, you know, keep moving forward, getting everything accurately added, not accurately, timely added to the, to the websites and recorded back and all of that stuff. So there, we asked for a little bit of deference because, you know, these part-time jobs are, these part-time jobs and it's hard to find certain individuals that can do it and have the qualifications and want to do it and want to do it for next to nothing money and all of that stuff. So that being said, you'll soon see all of our reports and stuff be added to the village website and be put out there just like we have always been doing, so.
Okay.
I think that answers everything, correct?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, we'll thank you for your time. Everybody else, is there anything further? Nothing? What's that, trustee Long?
Yeah, I, I wanted to say again, thanks to the Public Works for a great job they did. And also want to thank everybody for the flowers that you sent through my arms, weight and everything. So I appreciate it and all the thoughts and prayers, I really appreciate it. it.
Well, our thoughts and prayers are with you, Brian, we, we love you, man, we're sorry that you had to go, dealing with that, and wish you, you and your family, nothing but the best, so. Okay, that being said, if there's no further business to come before the board, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made by trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Hahn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, adjourned.
I wish.
Six fifty-three.